Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I am calling the February 12th regular Select Board meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We don't have any changes to the agenda announcements. Libby, you want to start?
This meeting is being video and audio recorded, and actually, I'm going to turn it to Erica for the next couple.
Thank you. So, the deadline has passed, and we now have committee applicants, applications for round four of our vacancies. Council for Human Services, we have one seat available and still no applicants, so we'll just keep that open. Council on Aging, one seat available, zero applicants, same, we'll just keep it open. Cultural Council, we have one seat available and two applicants, Kendall Graham and Jeremy White. Town of Nantucket Scholarship Committee, we have one seat available and three applicants, Peter Morrison, Alexis Sturgis, and Jeanie Critchley. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate seat, we have one seat available and two applicants, Peter Lacy and Robert Constable. So, we will have this on again next week, and then appointments will be made at your March 5th meeting.
John Giorgio has his hand up. John, did you need to speak now?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I missed it, I apologize, but did you call the role for the Select Board?
No, because they're online, right?
Yes, exactly. There are at least two of you online.
Okay, all right, I always forget to do that. Okay, so I am going to announce that we are hybrid tonight with two members online. Just Malcolm McNabb acknowledged that you're present online?
Yes, I'm here.
And Dawn?
Yes, present.
Matt and I and Tom are in the room.
Aye.
Does that suffice? Okay, go ahead, Erica, sorry.
That's okay. And we have a new committee, or a new work group, that the Board established at its meeting last week. It is the African Meeting House Investigation Procurement Work Group. There are two citizen seats available. We are currently accepting those applications, which are due no later than noon on Friday, February 28th. They can be mailed to the town building, town administration office at 16 Broad Street, or they can be emailed to me. My email is emooney@nantucket-ma.gov, and your appointments for that group are scheduled for March 19th.
The Master Plan Visioning process is having a kickoff event. It is tomorrow, Thursday, February 13th, at 5:00 PM, starting at 5:00 PM at the Nantucket Inn. It's being launched by the founder and president of a group called Strong Towns. It's supposed to be a very interesting speaker, and a really involved process. The event is free, it's open to all, but space is limited, and we ask that people RSVP by emailing the address that's on the Select Board agenda. And in association with the Master Plan process, there is a public outreach event called Kitchen Conversations, and you can get a little kit from the Plus Office and have a small group discussion with your friends, family, neighbors about Nantucket's strengths and challenges. And this is all meant to solicit feedback and input to help with the Master Plan planning process. The Dr. Howard Dickler Citizens Award is out for nominations. The Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust is accepting nominations for this award. The deadline is April 4th. Nominations are going to start being accepted on February 18th. And I'm just going to do a little info about it. Dr. Dickler was a valued member of the Nantucket community, known for his unwavering commitment to addressing housing and economic issues on Nantucket. Through his active participation in public meetings and his service on the Neighborhood First Advisory Committee, he played a crucial role in shaping the Affordable Housing Trust's efforts to maintain safe harbor under Chapter 40B since 2019. This award will recognize an individual who embodies Dr. Dickler's spirit through dedication, creativity, inclusiveness, and a fearless willingness to share ideas that advance housing opportunities for our year-round community. The Trust will review nominations. Again, those are open as of February 18th, closed as of April 4th. Nominations may be submitted through the Housing Office, and that information is on the Select Board agenda. The Affordable Housing Trust will review nominations and announce the recipient at the annual Town meeting on May 3rd. And I think that's it for announcements, other than Town offices will be closed this coming Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day.
Select Board comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have one. As reported in our media, local media, Inky and The Current, this week, last week, the Governor has decided to include in the budget the closure of the Picasset Mental Health Center. And there are very limited mental health service providers on the Cape and Islands, and I would like to bring up us possibly sending, as Select Board County Commissioners, a letter to the Governor's Office requesting its removal for the inclusion of the closure, due to the extremely limited options and the extreme difficulty of our mental health and hospital folks assisting with those emergencies, et cetera.
How does the Board feel about that, and willing to say it's for me to send a letter on our behalf?
If you need a motion, I'll make it, or just...
I think we can do it by consensus. Malcolm, John, is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll do that. I'll work something up and send it along.
Thank you.
Any other Select Board announcements or comments?
Just a quick comment. After a snow like we had, I'm always interested, because it shows things around the island. If you look at the roofs, you see which roofs are well insulated, because the snow is still there, and then you see some with racing stripes, and you know, that's the heat induction coming through and melting up above, and you see some that have whole bays that don't have insulation in them, that are like that. You also see which cars do not move in the parking lots. So, a couple of days later, you drive through the parking lot downtown, and 90% of the cars hadn't moved for like, two days. And even today, half the cars probably hadn't moved yet. So, I think it's pretty interesting. You know, when that happens, it's kind of an indicator. You can see what's going on. So, thank you.
Okay, interesting observation. Thanks, Matt. Okay, if there aren't any other Select Board comments, I'm going to move on to update on public comment questions from prior Select Board meetings. I am going to read some of the responses that were posted online today. If you'll bear with me while I open them up. Ooh, I hope I have it open. Oh, here we go. I did. Okay. So, there were a number of questions about Vineyard Wind last week in particular, that I thought it was useful to answer in the public and not ask people to go click a link to get the answers. So, the first question from Veronica Bonet was, "When was the Town notified that Vineyard Wind submitted an addendum revision to its construction and operation plan?" The answer is, "We were notified that they would be issuing, that Bessie would be issuing a revised construction and operation plan and revoking the suspension order within an hour of their public release of that information, and were embargoed from sharing it until they did." "Request that related correspondence be made publicly available." I'm working on putting together a timeline of my correspondence with Bessie and meeting dates and summaries. It's taking me a little while to pull all the information together. I'm planning to have it by the 21st of February to share online. Mary Chalk asked, "What were the results of the water quality tests after the blade collapse?" Those results were presented to the Select Board on September 18th, 2024, and there's a link online at the Public Questions. GE Vernova's consultants did a presentation at that meeting. "What are the findings from the marine life assessment?" GE Vernova's team is overseeing the assessment. The lab is currently analyzing the samples, and results are due in late February. The Select Board will schedule an update from GE Vernova and their consultants after the results are available. And then Mary also asked, "Why is new pollution appearing on the beaches?" That's a pretty tough question to answer. Marine debris reaches our shores 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, so being able to identify what came from where is virtually impossible. So, I mean, I just don't know how to answer that question. "What percentage of the collapsed blade remains at the seabed? Are they required to remove it? What is the deadline? How is enforcement handled?" Enforcement is handled by Bessie, and the Chair has asked GE Vernova to confirm the percentage of blade recovered. "How is microplastic cleanup being conducted? Are there enforcement measures and deadlines?" As far as we know, there are no, there's no microplastic cleanup that has been ordered by the federal regulators. "Are they required to post a decommissioning fund?" Everything related to what they're required to do is posted in the operating plan that Bohm put up online. I don't believe there's anything related to decommissioning, but it's a, you know, it's a hundred, the document's hundreds of pages long, so I would refer folks to that. "Is there a deadline for removal of the 66 defective blades, and how is compliance enforced?" Again, these are decisions that are managed and communicated at the federal level. The Town has not been provided any details. Amy DeCibio asked, "When will the new date for the best, for a meeting with Bessie be announced?" And the answer is, if and when it is scheduled, it'll be announced immediately. "Why can't Nantucket hold a meeting with Bessie?" I'm not sure I really understood this question, but I answered it this way, because Bessie controls what they will and will not do. And we can't, we have no authority to demand that they come do anything. And "Is the Town filing a lawsuit to document its complaints formally?" At this time, the Town is not taking any legal action on wind farms, but the Board does meet regularly an executive session to review our options in terms of legal option. So, everything's on the table, but nothing yet. And then Robert Bates asked questions about liability for snow removal on sidewalks on Nantucket, and I'm not going to read all of this, because it's very technical and legal and has a bunch of links to cases, but that is available on the Public Questions page for anyone to review in detail. So, it's a detailed answer from Town Council. So, that's it on response to last week's public questions, public comment questions. And now we'll move to public comment, and I want to make note that this is for items not on the agenda tonight, and the new proposed policy from Town Council regarding public comment is an agenda item, and I will be taking public input at that agenda. So, now is not the time to speak about that, but anything else that's not on the agenda, if anyone would like to speak? Go ahead, Brooke.
Brooke Gibbs, for Clara.
One really quick, easy thing that I wanted to share with you guys. If you would put timers on all the electric water heaters on island, both new and as they're replaced, they're about $150, they're about this big, they run on 220. And if you time them for use between 5:00 and 7:00 in the morning, and 5:00 and 7:00 at night, and leave them off all the other hours of the day, they maintain heat long enough to supply the house with hot water for those hours during the day when they're not really used, when people don't take showers, or use for dinner or cooking and stuff like that. So, my dad's been a plumber for 50 years, I've been a plumber for 25 now, somewhere around there. We did a test of this at our house, and saved between 88 and 90% on electricity for water heaters, okay? So, not to, you can also do that on the secondaries for boilers. You could have a little sub timer that works on the relay that goes between the secondary tank and the boiler to show when demand is. If you guys, and I gave this to Lawrence Sinatra years ago, nothing ever happened with it, so I just thought I'd come in and say, "We have a lot of energy usage here, that's a big aspect of houses, and if we can cut that down by 80 or 90% across how many thousands of houses here, I'm sure that it'll be positive for our, you know, trying to not use as much as we're using." Okay? Second thing was, the price of our island home. I like to volunteer to do the plumbing for nothing. Okay? So, when you guys look at the numbers on it, I like to do it for nothing, for a cost, okay? For permitting and costs. I'll do all the labor for nothing. Okay? I like to challenge all the other contractors and electrical guys, and Toscani, Carl Jellemi, step up, okay? You know, really. It's not, we don't need to spend $110 million on something that can cost us almost nothing. Okay? So, I think it's ridiculous that you guys are bound to contractors and people who are going to be opportunistic about this when we should be taking care of our people, you know? So, if that comes up and it's possible, I'd like to do it, okay? And I've been working here for 14 years, and I still can't get my license, but I can do work for everybody here, you know? So, if I'm good enough to do work for everybody underneath their thumb, then I'm good enough to do it for myself, for you guys. So, if it comes down to it, I'll do it for you, okay? For nothing. All right? Whenever you guys get it together. The $60 million in the PFAS well, is that on discussion tonight? The $60 million emergency thing for this well that's been decomp?
I won't, we won't be taking public comment on it, so...
Okay, then I'll skip that. The three-minute thing is going to come up for discussion later as well? Okay, I'll save it on that. Is there any update on the curiosity of the public, or the power outage that we had for stroll? Because the timing on it is just too perfect. I have a background in electronics...
Your time's up.
Oh, my God, serious?
There's a timer up on the screen.
Oh, I wasn't, I was looking at you guys, I wasn't looking at that. Can I continue, or do I need to stop?
Nope, three minutes.
Okay, I'll talk to you next week, then.
Okay, thanks. Okay, online, Megan Perry.
Thanks, Brooke. I was going to ask if you were going to take public comment on the emergency water declaration, or I forget how that was phrased, but it appears you're not. What I did want to do is give a huge thank you to Beau Barber, Deputy Chief, Bob Bates, and Kristin Mello. All three are unpaid experts who chose to speak at the ZBA meeting. Again, unpaid, because it was the right thing to do for our community, and I think it's important that each and every one of you listen to what they had to say. It is the job of the paid consultants, paid by the developers, to see that project go through. These three, Mr. Barber, Mr. Bates, and Ms. Mello spoke, again, unpaid, and experts within their fields, because it was the right thing to do, and I think we should all listen to what they had to say regarding fire safety, water pressure, and contamination of our drinking wells, both public and private. So, I encourage not only the Board, but the community to listen to what they had to say, and also what they have submitted as testimony to the ZBA. So, it's in writing. If you can't be bothered to listen to it, if you can't read it, you can listen to it on the Town's YouTube page. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing the discussion and public comment on limiting public comment later on. Thanks.
Thanks, Megan.
Hi, Amy Eldredge. I just want to talk about the pilot program on Pleasant Street. I sent an email to you and Matt, and I appreciate getting an email back. But my concerns were that the Sunday snowstorm and the snow we had today, that bike lane was not properly taken care of in the middle of a pilot program. Like, if you want people to utilize it properly, I just drove by there before I came here, and you can see where it was kind of between the sawhorses, but it was not a clean path either of the snowstorms. So, if you really want to get the true effect of a situation, I think that's not going to be, it's not going to be very useful, but at least can we take care of it so that in the eight weeks that you guys have that road one way, we're getting legitimate data, because I think you're going to find people are riding in the street towards the traffic, because half of the lane is blocked by snow that wasn't properly taken care of. So, I just wish that we could truly see how that's going to work. But, and you know, it's been going on since, what, Friday? We've had two dumpings of snow since then, and those two times, the area was not properly taken care of. And I really am concerned about the amount of traffic that's going to be going up Atlantic Ave towards the school and the hospital during critical hours of the day, because you're choke-necking one street down. And to have to drive all the way up to the school pool to get to the Stop &amp; Shop from Five Corners, that's ridiculous. And that street's not even properly paved. Is the situation on Atlantic Ave completed with the sewer project? Is that like, the final paving, no more work going to be done? That's going to be a nightmare, an absolute nightmare. And I wish that you guys would have thought about doing this when there was more traffic here. You doing it a week before school vacation, at a dead time? I mean, there's like, nobody on the roads, there's nobody here. So, what kind of numbers are you getting? And who's monitoring, like, the usage on pedestrians and bikers? Thank you.
Thanks. Online, Meredith Flupprey.
Hi, I'm calling in because I know you're not going to take public comment about the emergency water declaration, and I just am very concerned about this. If there's PFAS in well 15, well 16 is right there, and the more development we do, like, the proposed surfside crossing, the proposed development for Stephen Mori, I, you know, I think that we really need to think very seriously about how much development we do and how much, because that's going to be more water, and that plume is going to, from Tom's way, is going to move right over there. It is not far away. And I feel like we're maybe trying to put a Band-Aid on, and this is going to be a real problem. And I think we really just need to think about the health of our community. Like, when people, the state or the federal government's going to bring it down to four parts per trillion, and, you know, when people start getting cancer and dying, and you can't drink the water, nobody's going to want to come here to vacation. So, I really think we need to think about our community first, and what is best for our community, and keep an eye on this water. This is scary stuff. There, my neighborhood has tons of people that have had cancer, likely due to exposure to this, me included. And I just think it is no joke, and it's not something we should be exposing our children to. People use town water to make bottles for their newborns, and if there's PFAS in it, even if it's non-detect, it doesn't say zero, it says "non-detect," and those are two different terms. So, we need to have clean water. So, I urge you guys to really take this very seriously, and really think about what's best for our island and our sole source aquifer, because we don't need people developing cancer because they drank the water that was supposed to be so good. Thanks.
Thanks, Meredith. Anybody else for public comment?
Can I comment on that?
No. So, okay, we'll close public comment. There's no new business that I'm aware of. Next up is approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. Do I have a motion? Oh, no pending contracts, minutes and warrants.
Second.
Second. Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Okay, next up, we have gift acceptances.
You have Jeff Carlson and Tara Riley from Natural Resources to review this.
Great. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. So, to say hello, we've been presented an opportunity in our work here. We've been talking about doing an eelgrass management plan for a while. And in those discussions and kind of review of that scope with the scientific advisory panel of the Great Harbor Yacht Club Foundation, they find it in their generosity to gift us $65,000 to engage Urban Harbors Institute, who's the contractor working on our harbors action plan, to actually complete our first eelgrass management plan. So, we're excited to get that started and work with groups like the Land and Water Council, and some of the other on-island stakeholders, to put together a plan to effectively manage our existing populations of eelgrass, and hopefully turn the tide and get it back into an area of restoration. So, Tara can speak to this much better than I can, but we're happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the Board? The motion would be to accept the gift and send a letter of thanks.
So, moved.
Or second.
By roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm? I didn't hear you, Malcolm. Was that an aye?
Aye.
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Okay, and the Chair votes aye. That's great, amazing. We'll look forward to hearing how that all goes. That's a big gift with...
Yeah, we'll definitely have that planned back in front of you guys to review and take a look at before it's all set and done.
Okay, terrific. Thanks, you guys. Nice work.
Thanks.
Okay, Citizen Departmental Committee requests, request for the Select Board to declare a state of emergency regarding the Nantucket Water Department well 15, for PFAS contamination. Mr. Turbin?
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. So, in the pack, and before you have an emergency declaration vote, we're asking for the declaration under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31. It deals specifically with emergency expenditures. When the water company, the water director came and talked to us about, talked to me about the confirmatory results in December of 2024 with well 15, they've already engaged, they had started to engage a consultant to design a filtration system, but it was impaired in that discussion that the costs were going to be rather sizable, and they don't have an appropriation to meet that. And the only way to be able to, for the water company to continue to progress and be able to have this finalized with design, procured, installed, and be able to have well 15 be able to be used with this system, is first to have an emergency declaration by the Board. The Board is empowered under the statute as the only authority to be able to declare this, which is why we're before you, even though it is a water company issue. It will allow us to then go to DOR to get emergency authorization to spend in excess of appropriations. We will then add a warrant article to the capital article at Town meeting to address the appropriations, the ultimate cost for this. The first step here is to get a favorable declaration from you of the emergency to allow for us to begin to spend, get DORs of authorization to spend in excess when we reach that point. It'll also help us with procurement. We have already discussed this with DCAM. We have been granted a waiver of the advertising requirements for procurement. They've also advised us that with this declaration, we can use our internal policies for procurement in, with emergency declarations to be able to continue this. So, Mark, and I, and Greg, and Chuck have been working, bending pretty close contact through this whole process. This just allows the water company to continue the process and continue to move as expeditiously as possible to deal with the situation that arose.
Thanks, Perry.
And I will mention and recall, some of you may recall, we did this very same declaration in January of 2018 with the sewer force main break as well.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Okay, a motion?
Move approval as written. News of an emergency.
And Dawn seconded. By roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you for bringing it to us, so we can get this project moving forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mark. Okay, Town Managers' Report.
Okay, so, we have some Enterprise Fund budgets to review with you for fiscal '26, Our Island Home Sewer and Stormwater, and also water. And we're going to start with Our Island Home. I think we have Peter Holden, our administrator, who is present, and is Bob online? Do we know? Okay. Peter has given a very similar presentation already to the Finance Committee, and in discussing the agenda, upcoming agenda items, we agreed that it's in keeping with past practice to have Enterprise Fund budgets reviewed here as well. And so, the Board knows, when we gave our general fund budget presentation, we are moving towards a different format, and that is the format you're going to be seeing as these Enterprise Funds take us through their budgets. So, Peter, same kind of deal as with FinCom. We're focusing on not so much the details of mission and stuff like that, which mostly everybody already knows, but the touch on goals and speak to exceptions and budgetary proposals.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Like, like I did with FinCom, we'll move on over to the, to the goals, second page, okay? So, the first goal is to create a comprehensive marketing plan to expand awareness to the community of the off-island medical centers and hospitals of the available services provided by Our Island Home. We're trying to capture a lot more of the residents that are going off-island, to make sure they come back to our facility, so they don't need to be sprinkled out over on the Cape in Boston, to make them aware. And that's slowly happening. Our goal two, we continue to hire open nursing positions with permanent employees, and we really are pushing hard to move away from traveling. And we really are pushing hard to move away from travel agencies. And it seems to be turning the tide just recently. I'll get into that. And then goal three is to put systems in place to increase the daily census and Medicare admissions by reducing referral response time. We are actually starting to see a very good relationship with our with our area hospitals. We're developing a much closer relationship with Cape Cod Hospital. We're working hard with Pam, case manager at the hospital. And the response time is really being decreased in and we have been seeing that for over the last four to five weeks even more. So it's good to be having that relationship. Goal four is to provide a higher acuity clinical care training to be able to accept more complex referrals. Right now, our acuity level at Island Home is kind of low, I mean per se, because the general health of our population utterly is pretty good. Usually on the mainland, we got a lot more trakes, a lot more wound care, a lot more complex you know, diagnosis. Over as we move over to our initiatives, we're going to increase the number of outside activities, events and venues to our residents. We, Dreamland has been very gracious to us. This week alone, we went down to the matinee with our residents, quite a few of them. We're also using the Whalen Museum. And this year, I've seen an increase of outdoor venues that we've been obtaining. Also at St. Paul's, just recently, we went to the Jazz Festival or Jazz Quartet they had there that was well received. Initiative two, we're working with different providers and organizations in marketing awareness of our island home. That's where Bob is coming in along with us. We are working strongly with the media of people with the new facility and also with our own resources, ENF Marketing Off Island. We continue to work with the design team on identifying, implementing the discipline needs of the new facility. We just had Monday a design meeting with the signage, the some of the finishes on the floor and other nuances that we're finalizing for the new facility. And also we initiative four to decrease the takeback and penalties associated with CMS and Medicaid audits by implementing additional oversight in-house in conjunction with contracted MDS services. What is happening CMS and DPH? They're doing a lot more auditing and the regulations are becoming more strict as we have to be required to carry a higher staffing ratio within a facility. Right now, I know it doesn't mean much to you, but PPD needs to be above 3.58. Right now, we're running at 3.6566 with the census of 41, 42 currently in the facility. So it's kind, it's getting tight. So we're really working hard on that. If we don't do that each day within a quarter, they actually take back 2% of a total Medicaid reimbursement for a quarter. So each quarter, it'll take back 2%. That is a huge hit because Medicaid is is our biggest revenue source overall. Also, the oversight, they got new infection control mechanisms coming in and regulations. We're trying to stay on top of that. So that will also affect our revenue if we don't keep the quality measures up. Okay, also, we're still working with the Nantucket High School vocational program. We got that pretty much solid. We're just trying to figure out who would be the actual instructor of the of the students to become CNAs. That's one of the things we're working out. We're pretty excited about that. Okay. So the current year accomplishments, we increased our nursing home compare five star rating back in October from one star to four star. Right now, we're hovering between four and three depending depending on what month we're looking at nursing home compare. Okay, we increased our average Medicaid a daily rate from 756 to 807, which is a result of our nursing rehabilitation documentation to capture these skills that allow for the higher rate of reimbursement. Any questions on that? We're really focusing on documentation, which is showing the results of that. Moving on. Our last survey last year was of public health. We had four minor deficiencies with the standard survey compared to the state average Massachusetts of eight to nine per facilities. And we only had four. Life safety, we had no deficiencies, which is rare. And this could be found in nursing home compare. Right now, we are in the survey window. So our main focus is getting survey ready and working on all the policies, documentations, making sure everything is in place for the survey team to walk in. Moving on, the nursing department has secured a full-time permanent RN, Island resident, which did come from Nantucket College Hospital. And also, we are now able to offer six days a week of rehabilitation therapy services. Before, we only could do five. And because of the weather, the ferries canceling and all that, we weren't getting all the documentation that was required. So we increased the rehab capability to six days a week now, which is disastrous. So that should increase the revenue also. With the addition of a geriatric physician and a behavioral nurse practitioner to the facility, we have vastly improved the quality of care for the resident population in the timely documentation with the A's to increase Medicare and Medicaid revenue. I just want to say to have a geriatric specialist in the facility three to four days a week and who is now will be becoming our medical director in the future. That's awesome. The hospital is trying to secure a geriatric physician, but we were able to secure a geriatric physician for the facility. Okay, and also we have an NP behavioral nurse. DPH is looking at behavior as a focus this survey coming in. And we are fortunate enough to have this nurse practitioner looking over the behavioral patterns of our residents. Because of the regulatory mandates that are coming out in March, there's going to be a lot of more mandates and regulations on the infection control. So there will be a cost increase in that and a staffing increase in that. And right now, we're getting prepared for that. And that's going to become effective in March. Staffing succession planning in general. We have a long, the kitchen, the laundry, the CNAs themselves and a couple of the nursing. We have quite a longevity in the building. They work like 20 to 30 years in that building, even 10 years. So we're looking at them eventually replacing them too. Okay. The big ticket items we're looking at. We do have the new windows. That bid package is going, went out today for the new windows. That's to be completed in fiscal year 2026. The fire doors, the fire dampers that I've been working on along with the corridor resident door. That bid package went out today. And also the corridor and resident doors. Before, that was such a focus thing item on the life safety survey, but this year it is. They will be, they will be inspecting each door frame, each residence door and each corridor door to make sure that there's no holes and everything is sealed. Also, also, we're looking at the DPH and life safety survey regulations and the improvements. Each survey as they come through, they always have an item that they want us to upgrade. So we have to allocate for that going forward. In the next five years, should the facility be placed in a hole, the new facility, we're looking at, we will be needing a new West Wing Shower update. The funds for that are secured. We're looking at a new generator and shed. The generator we have is over 30 years old. It's almost 45. Then the sprinkler pipes, they're starting to show signs of wear and tear. The sprinkler heads, upgrade of IT infrastructure, we're maxed out on that. And I can go on and all the upgrades that's needed for the new facility. Moving on. So as you see that if you want to, Libby, do you want me to go over this, this part here?
Just a high level overview, I think.
Okay, so we're looking at fiscal year 2025 for the projected budget for fiscal year 2026. We're looking to increase in the expenses of 452K. And out of that, that's payroll mostly is because out of that increase of 450, 452,000 for 2026, 361,000 of that is for the payroll, which includes the waste increases, the colas and the insurance costs on that. Then that, that shows 72% of the total budget for that. And then on the operating side, which represents 28%, we're looking at mostly increases in expenses requests. And that comes out to a little over 90K. Okay. And if you're looking at the actials, the salaries and wages, we're looking at an increase of 312,000. Health insurance, we're looking projected to be a 46.4,000. And Medicare cost increase will be 2.8,000. Okay, and moving on over to the revenue. We're projecting an increase to revenue of to 452,803 in fiscal year 2026. And for the our expense increase request, I'm going to be starting off with the heating fuel, which will be recurring. I'm looking for an additional amount annually of 12,000. That's just due to the rising cost of heating fuel. And then we're moving on to the electric for the same reason. I'm looking for 11,000 annual increase, which will be reoccurring. That's due to the rising cost of electricity. And then a big one is food, daily meals. That's 20,000. That I, I'm looking at that. That's probably a biggest increase in expenses in operating is the food cost. And that's because of the rising cost of the food, which everybody's experiencing. And then medical supplies too. We're looking at 20,000 just due to the rising cost of the items that are required every day, like the pens, like the wipes and all that, et cetera. And then we're looking at a pharmacy increase of 10,000. That's just to hopefully help us cover the new drugs that are coming out, like the antibiotics, like one, like one run of an antibiotic antibiotic in the MedA can cost us 3,000 for one by-day prescription. That's just an example. And then we're looking at employee housing. We're looking to increase that recurring of 13K because of the increase in rates. And then finally propane for four. The organizational chart, just, any questions?
Any questions for the board?
I'm all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you very much, Peter. Next, we have the sewer stormwater enterprise fund budget. And I think we've got David online, David Gray, sewer director.
Yeah, hello, everyone.
Same thing, David. Kind of high level overview.
Yep. The, we'll start with the goals here. My mic working? Can?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I was getting an echo and I wasn't sure. The goals that we're showing to continue with our create a strategic plan for the department to include our four department divisions, operations, collections, construction, and now stormwater management. Continue to work very closely with other town departments and island organizations during all phases of projects and coordinations with other projects. This has gone extremely well with this force main project, being able to work so closely with with Mark and and other departments from preservation to historic commission, everything else. So this has been really, really good for us. Goal three with the full-time stormwater manager. We are well into the development of our stormwater regulations. Not only to meet today's standards, but to meet all mass DEP and EPA requirements, because some of these are changing so rapidly. Since I think I've written this, there's already been some changes. So we're watching that very, very closely. With our trip up in Boston for the Newea Convention, we're still looking at technologies and for destruction and or reduction of PFAS. One thing that we, that I looked at very closely, and I want to further look into it more, is some of our sledge cake drying to, it's, it could produce reductions of up to 75% of what we have to take to the landfill and would be 75% less that we would have to seek any kind of destruction technology in. So that's where we are as far as the goals. Our initiatives going forward. We're still looking at coastal resilience measures for the protection of the both wastewater facility bed areas. I can't knock on wood enough that this year so far has been pretty good. We're continuing with our CIMON projects, which have been going on going now for multiple years. Pleasant Street was just recently redone. We ended up replacing all the water, stormwater and sewer on that road up to Warren Street that was deemed a condition five. And we're still collaborating a bunk across all the departments and especially with our internal PFAS group. We can't come up with a a technology or a destruction for just one part of PFAS. We need to look across everybody with what Mark has and what Chris Lowe has at the landfill. It's all, we have to look at all across the island. So that's something that we're working on very intently. And I'm still working with HR for employee recruitment. We have seen a shift. I don't know how to explain it, but we've had some more applications in the past few months than we had seen in probably the past few years. So there's some type of a shift going on that I really can't explain yet. I can touch on our accomplishments that we've done. Just I'll run through this pretty quickly. We all know the third force main project's well underway with almost all of the mains having been installed except for a few hundred feet left on Pine Street, Silver Street and the intersection of by Pleasant Street. If anyone's had a chance to do any of the walks downtown, the restoration of a lot of the sidewalks in town have been completed. Center Step, Lily and Liberty. I think the contractor that did that work was phenomenal. They did an incredible job.
It happened quickly too, David.
Yes.
It happened very quickly.
They were incredibly fast and they would come on and a little bit later in the morning boat and leave a little, but they were they were getting hundreds of feet done a day. It's really come out really, really nice. I I can't say enough about MTK. They've been incredible. And that took a awful lot of work dealing with, working with a lot of the homeowners along these routes, tree roots and stuff like that. It's really come out nice. Stormwater manager has been working very closely with all the different groups involved with coastal resilience, with Vince and his team. Stormwater projects, stormwater regulations. We're also working with land bank and Nantucket Water and Land Council. We're working with all these groups. So everyone's talking, which is really refreshing. And we're currently working on getting a lot of the stormwater infrastructure into GIS, which is in underway right now. The new membranes just were finished, completed in the last couple of weeks. There was some nail biting there going on. Why we did that? Because it was 18 degrees and the wind was blowing 20 every day. So we had to treat the membranes with with kid glows and keep everything warm. So that went very, very well. And we're, we completed year two of all of our testing for PFAS and PFOA. It all waste streams coming into the the treatment plant. We're testing every single stream that hits the plant. It's been very good, given us a baseline and a roadmap to further move forward, determine where and how these are getting to us. That's pretty much touches on that. Some of the regulatory stuff that may be coming. PFAS, PFOA regulations for wastewater, we know are being developed by EPA and mass DEP. We don't know what the final limit's going to be. We have heard talks of down to drinking water standards. So this could definitely have some significant impacts on how our final effluent is treated. And what kind of processes, like similar to what water is doing, we would have something much larger just to take in because of the way everything comes out of the. because of the way everything comes out of the facility. We're also hearing in the meetings we just had in Boston that we may be looking at some stormwater discharge limits coming in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, similar to what the Cape and all the other cities are experiencing with MS four regulations. So those are coming. Key projects that will be, I'm sorry.
David, hang on.
Back to PFAS real quick. You're talking about being able to handle, when you went to that seminar, when you guys went off island, you're talking about able to handle PFAS and PFOA, but isn't there like fourteen or sixteen thousand different PFAS? Are people looking at the whole family of it?
What a lot of the groups seem to be doing, they're looking at at least a minimum of twenty-four and a lot of the different processes. Some of the big, the major hitters that we're seeing now that we have data on what we have coming through the plant and how it's being transitioned or converting over to different types of PFAS or PFOA. Talking with these, all the vendors and all the different specialists on this. Will they come up with something that will destroy every single known? I, I don't know. I don't think anybody knows yet, but I think that they're focusing on the biggest ones that they've seen issues with as far as either cancer rates or other issues. But it's still, it's still a huge work in progress for a lot of these. There's very few full-scale processes going on. There have been some that have been extremely successful at destroying a large group of the different strands. But I don't honestly know if they'll be able to do all three thousand, fourteen thousand, whatever the total is. But we're following that closely and probably on a daily or weekly basis right now.
Well, it's good they're talking about it.
They, they all are talking about it. We went to some, everyone is really starting to speak about it now compared to a year and a half, two years ago. Key projects that we're looking to do is final restoration and paving of this third sewer forced main route. We're all, we had a meeting today. We're all, everything is hinging on when Victor is able to open his plant and the weather will cooperate. And a lot of the roads only have binder courses on them. All the way through Center Street, Lily, all the way up through Atlanta Gap. Those are all just binder course, as is all of Surfside Road. So those will all be final paved. We're hoping this season, everything will get done. The phase two upgrades here at the treatment plant are in design. That's a weekly meeting that we have. The RFP, RFQ is going out for designer for the maintenance administration for building here at the treatment plant. The OPM has those documents in hand and he's working on the bid for that, to get that out. A big one is the Silver Street tributary area as far as stormwater goes. That parking lot takes an incredible amount of flow from a huge, huge tributary area. So we're, we're working with consultants and stuff on that and what it might look like coming up in the future. It's stormwater is going to be big in some of these areas. Staffing, we just sent out some letters today for offer letters to a couple of operator positions and we've still been unable to fill our compliance engineering office position. Big tickets, we're looking at Somerset Raceway area and preliminary planning, Washington Street Coastal Resiliency Joint Project, working with the Select Board, Land Bank and other town departments. That's, that's a big one. And then Baxter Road, utilities relocation and alternative access. That's well into design. We have a hundred percent design now for all of that. Just hoping that that trigger point doesn't come sooner. I'd like, love to see it come later on down the line. But I don't know if there's any questions on what I touched on that before I go into the EIRs.
Doesn't sound like it. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Brooke. The, looking at personnel items, we're looking to bring on a data entry position with all the new softwares and programs that we've been using and CMMS data collection, GIS stuff. We're hoping to bring in a data entry position. Ongoing operational expenses, similar to what Peter said. Everything is costing by far a lot more, especially equipment repairs on these larger vehicles. Even tire prices have really gone through the roof. So vehicles, equipment, those are some of the bigger ones for repair and maintenance, expendables. That's our pipes and fittings and fern coats and different stuff like that. That's all gone up quite drastically. And our chemicals is, every time I see the invoices coming for chemicals, it's with the fuel surcharges and everything else, the chemical supplies is really, we're trying to find out a way how to reduce some of our chemical usage, but we're still looking at that. Electricity is going up. Some of the big capital items that we're looking for, for some supplemental funding. Airport road pump station upgrades. That station was built nineteen eighty-six. We're looking about one point seven million dollars for that station. Somerset Needs Area, again, we're looking for some further funding, three point four million. Kater Lane, which is, again, one, our station was done in two thousand and four. So that one needs an upgrade, about one point nine million. And then the two thousand and four clarifiers in Sconset have slowly fallen apart on us. So that's about one point seven million. Nothing else really has changed. The org chart is similar to the same, just with some open positions. Other than that, if you have any other further questions, I can't touch on stormwater if you want me to move right into stormwater.
Unless anybody has any questions about sewer, I'd love to hear about stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Serious about that.
As we all know, stormwater infrastructure is even older than the sanitary sewers. It's very intricate network of pipes, collectors, headwalls, discharge locations. And originally, it was the original sanitary sewer system back in the early days. So we've taken and gone through all the steps. We're working with Brian's team and everyone else to create a stormwater enterprise so we can focus, have somebody focusing strictly on the stormwater issues. And ultimately with our regulations and these structures that may come out of that, to be able to fund that enterprise fund itself. So we're currently working on almost exactly what we need to do on the sanitary sewers. We've started phase one, we're getting ready to start on another phase for, to doing a complete capacity maintenance, operation and management program. We've started in the Children's Beach area. So that work is underway and still ongoing for cleaning, CCTV cameraing, everything, GPSing, a lot of the infrastructure. What we have found on some of these, which we weren't sure what some stuff was, is they're not within the roadways. They're across people's yards, backyards, right along foundations. So we're finally getting a handle on where everything is on that. Working with, very closely with the Land Bank on that huge project, that takes a huge flow from the cliff area and Coffin Park and all that area. So that's a, that's a pretty exciting project what we're working with them on. And at the end of the investigations of CCTV stuff, that will all come out in a map and a complete report. It will become a living document like the sanitary sewers is. It's constantly ongoing, we constantly update it every year. So phase two is ongoing. You, if anyone's been up by Sconset, you'll see our crews are out there now working on, working between two houses that both feet apart maybe and continuing the repairs in Sconset that were discovered in our C-MON program. Water sewer, electric, everything else is in this one line, lane out there. So it's, it's been a tough one. And phase three and beyond are going to continue the same work to expand other tributary areas across the island. Some of these stormwater tributary areas are massive. So that's about where I sit right now for all those. Right now, there's been some general fund transfers back and forth to take and fund what we have now until we can get our, our enterprise fund fully established, get it, get the regulations done, and then we can get into our fee structures, et cetera. So it's going very well. It's, it's a challenge, but it's going well. Well, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment, David. I think it's, it's interesting. I didn't realize it, you know, when I was, when Nat and I were kids, we were swimming in the old, the old sewer discharge. And we would get kicked out of swimming lessons occasionally. But I didn't realize that all of this is related. The coastal resiliency, I thought, well, the water, if the water's coming up. Well, there's the water is coming up and, you know, stormwater is coming over and water is getting a little bit higher and you can see that. But it's also the, some of these areas like down on Washington Street are getting water coming down from Orange Street, coming down from higher areas on big storms and are filling up. And then it's also some of the groundwater is rising. And so some of the neighbors down there have walked me around and shown how it's all connected. So it's really important that David's doing the work he's doing for, you know, those areas because we're going to have to move some of the water out. We have to store it in some areas and move it efficiently as we go. And so we're, you know, it's really important that we're doing this now and we're not ahead on it, but we're ahead from where a lot of places are. And I think that it's, you know, I'm glad to see that we are, you know, expanding and doing it because it's become, going to become increasingly important.
I'm glad you said that about the groundwater, because every inch, millimeter or whatever, the ocean level goes up, the groundwater is going up with it. So we're having to combat that end of it as well, so.
Yeah, the physics of that is it's the closer you are to the water, the higher the groundwater is. And then every mile away or so, it doesn't impact it quite as much. You think about it, it's pushing it up.
Yes.
You know, you see it in a scientific book, it's showing how it lifts, which is, I didn't know that. I thought, I just stop it on, you know, stop it at Grant Point and you have nothing to worry about. Grant Point's going to, going to have water coming up regardless. So we're going to have to work around that, so.
Yeah, all the places we've been sending water are filled with water.
Yeah, and the first places that it's happening was all, that was all wetlands. Grant Point and Straight Wharf, et cetera. You know, Washington Street, they took half of Orange Street and, you know, there was a dune there. They pushed it all down and made more land. And so that, you know, a lot of the places that we're having the most issues already were places that we filled in. So, you know, so it's, we're falling, now we're going back to the future in a way.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that the community be aware that this is coming in terms of us as property owners being responsible for where our, where water goes from our properties, from our roofs, from our patios, et cetera, and that there is a cost associated with that to the community. And just so people need to be prepared that there, the regulations are coming and the enterprise fund, you know, and fees and so forth are coming. We're trying to signal that early and often, so it's not a surprise when it happens.
Thank you very much for that, Brooke. It's been a real challenge and I know Libby knows how long it took us to do the sewer regulations, the stormwater regulations are coming along at quite a bit faster pace, but still very intense.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, all quiet over here. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you, everyone.
Water is next.
First, I'd like to thank you guys on behalf of the Water Commission for adopting that declaration that will help us move very fast on this situation. For us, this upcoming year is almost rinse and repeat from last year, talking with contractors, developers, growth that's happening, some slowing down. We see a very similar budget as last year, the last two years. Our main goal is to finish those capital improvements with David on that sewer forced main. I know it's been disruptive and it's been a lot of work for you, Erica, keeping track of all the permits and the road closings. But hopefully we can move that forward and we're able to replace our water and sewer and storm drains on that whole path. So for the first time, we're actually blowing up a section and finishing the whole thing, beginning to end. We still want to continue with our customer service. I think we do a really good job with that. Doing things with our billing software that might allow in the future, upcoming year, for people to look at your account in different ways through the computer. And we want to do construction of our new water supply well at North Pasture. It's still at review at Mass DEP right now. Hopefully within that next budget year, it'll be done and we can move forward and get the pump station built and start using that well. And the initiatives obviously follow those goals. As I mentioned before, the, the budget is pretty much the same. We're looking at about the same number of new connections with our connection fees. They haven't gone up. The rate has stayed the same. So water use will go up a little bit just by adding the new connections. But it pretty much stays the same. When we looked at our five-year look ahead, big, big for us is the regulatory field is obviously PFAS. And there's a, there's a program through EPA that's the unregulated contaminant rule. It's a UCMR. That's how they found PFAS was a problem back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, when it started. We just finished or completing the UCMR five, where we take samples of wannacoma's water and we send it to different labs through the EPA and they look for new contaminants that are emerging that they can maybe take a closer look at. So that's ongoing and that's going to add more things that we have to sample for. With the EPA coming out with the four on the PFOA and the PFOS, the four-part EPA regulation, Mass DEP is currently working on adjusting their PFAS regulation. That is the PFAS six, which is you add up the six PFAS compounds to get to twenty parts. You've got to be below that. Mass DEP could change their, their regulation. And I think in some conversations with them, I think that's coming. I don't know where they're going to set it at. They might follow EPA and lower those for certain, certain individual PFAS compounds. So that's really going to dictate what we're sampling for, how we're sampling for, and the budget for sampling. So it's going to increase definitely. Other things coming up, you know, capital-wise, we're talking about PFAS treatment now. It's obviously was just assumed in this that maybe down the road, we would see it. It's here a little faster than we thought, but we're ready for it. So I think we're going to take care of that. And our capital projects have moved to not just replacing old water mains, but extending water mains where it's economically feasible. So if you're close enough to an existing water main and you have a private well contaminated with PFAS, we're going to try to get you town water. And further down on that list, you know, I lay those, those streets out. Right now, there, there's maybe four or five roads there. You can see them there on the page. That first year for twenty twenty-seven would be getting water mains to those people. Another big one will be some tank maintenance and water main replacements. We've got to get back to working on those older water mains. The streets that I've listed, I've talked with David Gray in different places of the island that also need stormwater work and sewer work with the C-MON process. So none of these are random. None of these are going to be wannacoma by itself or sewer by itself on another road. We'll go together. These might change depending on, you know, if there's a higher need for sewer replacement on one street than another. The list may change, but we're going to work together on all those roads and try to get them all done at once, the same way we're doing the sewer forced main project. Staffing needs, obviously, I think as we grow with customers, we're going to need to maintain that customer service. I could see the next employee probably being admin staff to help up upfront with customer service. Maybe in a few years out, I could see an engineer to replace me. I never replace myself. Might be help, might be time to get a little, little help. But other than that, the staff is good. You know, we have everybody taking classes to get their licenses, including the business manager and two of the admin staff are going to get their, taking classes. And two of the admin staff are going to get their, taking classes to get their water supply license to better understand for customer serve. If people have questions and they know what the license is about and you know the rules and the regulations, you can better help the customer. So everyone's going for their license, even the admin staff, which is good news. And who knows, one of those guys could have my job, you know, 10 years from now. Again, the budgets are just about the same. There is a little increase mainly due for electrical costs and utility costs as oil, propane, and electrical. Everything else is going to kind of remain the same for us. Stations are in good shape. Everything else is in pretty good shape. Revenue should be about the same. A slight increase with, with a small increase in the, in the new revenue from the new services that are connected. But other than that, it's almost a rinse and repeat. You know, I don't have any expense, extra expense, EIRs to talk about. We're, we're pretty good there.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Okay, next up is a review and possible adoption of new public comment policy. I'd like to start by saying that, that this proposal came from Town Council proactively, based on change in case law and, and the situation around public comment. This was not requested by the Select Board. And I will have John Giorgio give us a summary about why he felt this was necessary and what the proposal entails.
Thank you, Brooke. We've actually been joined tonight. Lauren has joined on and she's going to take the lead on this presentation, if that's okay.
Terrific. Hi, Lauren, thank you.
Hello, and thank you to be here. Thank you for having me. So as you indicated, Madam Chair, the law has changed with respect to public participation at open meetings. And therefore, we wanted to bring forward, for your consideration, a policy that better protects the town and residents who might participate during public participation in, with regard to the First Amendment and free speech rights. Essentially, the case, which you've probably heard about by now, was called the Barron v. Kalenda case. And in that case, the South Borough Board of Selectmen at the time had a policy, which was essentially a civility policy requiring that anybody who participated at a public meeting had to be polite. And the court held that people have the right to appeal to their governments and that requiring a person to be polite essentially is a decision that's made by the beholder and that it would be more appropriate to impose content-neutral, time, place, and manner restrictions on participation rather than leaving that to the sole discretion of the, of the appointed or elected board. And so what we've done is essentially prepared a policy that allows the board to impose those reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions in the context of the open meeting law. And at the same time, allow the board to take public comment and to achieve the business before the board on the night of any particular meeting. I'm happy to go through the different sections of the policy if that would be useful. Otherwise, I'm happy to take questions, Madam Chair, whatever works best for you.
Okay, I think what I'll do is start with questions or comments from the board. And there is an extensive review in the packet as well as a propose, a draft of the public participation policy. So any of the board members want to weigh in on this at this point or ask any questions of Town Council?
My one comment is I'm not sure that 10 minutes is sufficient. It was talking about limiting the public to 10 minutes. I don't think that's a good idea. I think, personally, I think there has to be a limit, especially if it's being, it's repetitive, because we could be here for a half hour or two hours if enough people show up, even at three minutes each. You know, so I do think it should be some sort of limit if it's a repetitive things. But I think, you know, but I, but I don't think we should be doing 10 minutes. I think that's too short. And the rest is sort of makes, the rest seems like cleanup and makes a lot of sense to me.
Malcolm? You're muted, Malcolm. We muted you before.
Okay, how's that?
There you go. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I agree with Nat. I was going to say 10 minutes is not enough time. Otherwise, I don't have a lot of comments.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I completely agree. I think public comment is very valuable to us. And I think that's in there as a discussion point, not as a policy suggestion necessarily. And I'd love to hear Lauren go through some of the sections, maybe in a high level, to kind of brief the public.
Dawn?
Sam, I think 10 minutes is too limiting. Maybe something like 30 minutes. And I'm sure that would be rare, but I think it would be more reasonable.
If I might ask, is it possible to leave that at the discretion of the chair in terms of the duration of public comment based on the other items on the agenda? I know from my experience that there's some nights where we have a lighter agenda and there's a lot of room for, you know, public comment. But there's other times where we have a really heavy agenda. And to have public comment stretched for an extended period of time, you know, puts us well past nine o'clock. And so having the chair have some discretion on that, is that possible to work in there?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep. Thanks, Lauren.
Yeah, so certainly the 10 minutes that's in the draft policy is certainly for consideration. And we are not advocating for the idea that 10 minutes is sufficient or appropriate in every instance. We have seen municipalities throughout the state impose various timeframes as an overall limit or even none at all. I think the one thing to bear in mind, Madam Chair, is that the decision about how long public comment should be should not be based on the content of any discussions, but instead on those reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So, you know, I do think it's appropriate for you to, for you or a chair because this policy would apply to all public bodies in the town. It would be appropriate for the chair to make a decision. Tonight is really busy. We only have time for 15 minutes. But my kind of concern would be to making that decision on the fly. I think it's better to make it ahead of time before a public comment begins. You know, regardless of our good intentions, I think it's more likely that if people are saying things that feel objectionable or upsetting, that it'd be more likely for a chair to say, okay, you know, we've been doing this long enough. Let's, let's stop now as compared to deciding ahead of time. We have a really busy agenda. We're only going to take 15 minutes. So again, I think it's fine for the policy not to establish an overall limit. And I think it's fine for the chair to make a decision on an overall limit at, at any particular meeting. I would just caution that that decision should be based on a reasonable time, place, and manner issue and not based on kind of what we believe people may or may not say.
And to Matt's point about, there was sort of a tradition that developed over time that, that when people were repeating what other people said, you know, the speakers were asked not to repeat it. And it sounds like that's not really something we should be doing if someone wants to reinforce something and use their three minutes that way. But I think maybe just as a practical matter, maybe at the agenda meeting, which happens the afternoon before the Select Board meeting, that the chair and vice chair would review the agenda and sort of come up with a timeframe for public comment for, for the session or.
Now I'm going back and forth on it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going back.
It's not easy.
Well, because the other part, like if you think about, you know, let's, let's say it's, you know, the wind turbines and everyone wants to say we should have done something different. And 30 people want to say kind of the same thing. I think it would be great if they said, you know, I agree and I'm adding this. And then, and we go on to the next person, rather than get the same exact thing 30 times in a row. Because then we have to pick out the one or two things that are important out of each one, you know. And it's not that I'm trying to not listen to people. I'm just trying to make sure that we're using everyone's time efficiently. And if we cut, you know, we'll pick on the wind turbine people for a minute. If we cut them off after 15 minutes and the people, you know, and everyone has taken three minutes to say, you know, five people have taken three minutes to say the same thing. And the next two or three had something important to say that we could, you know, we really needed. So I'm kind of torn, you know? Like, it would be great if we wouldn't repeat, if the public just wouldn't repeat the same things. Just say, hey, I agree with, you know, I agree with what Tom said, except we got to think about it from this angle. Thank you. And then went on, especially when it's something that, you know, large and contentious, it would make it easier for everybody. And I just don't know how to get there, you know, sort of with a policy and how to get, how do you get people to be, you know, sort of more trusting and helping each other and, you know, doing it more positively? How do we get, I don't know. Like, I just don't have the answer.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
I think it's, it's fine to encourage people to not repeat and to make their point and move on. I think if you're, if you're saying that each person gets three minutes, then that three minutes really is up to them. However, you know, as I, as I said, I don't think there's a problem with encouraging people to, you know, to, to make their point and either move on to the next item or not. The benefit of establishing a not-to-exceed period for any particular meeting is you can kind of anticipate perhaps, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, you might say, we planned for 30 minutes. You know, can anybody, can everybody who'd like to speak tonight raise their hand? And you could, at that point, look around if it seemed like there were, you know, people in excess of, of the time that had been allocated. You could make a decision if you had the time and the agenda to extend it. I think it is going to be different, as Matt said, to come up with, you know, a one-size-fits-all policy that's going to work perfectly every time. So there's going to have to be some, you know, some recognition that there may need to be adjustments made in, in an overall time period. But having those reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions makes it easier for the chair. For example, if you'd said 30 minutes and 10 people at the beginning had said that they wanted to spend three minutes, all of a sudden, you know, there's 20 more people that want to speak. It may be that that night isn't a good night for them all to speak. You had the 30-minute limit. You would stop the conversation at 30 minutes. That wouldn't prevent the Select Board from holding what I have referred to as, in the future, at another meeting as a listening session, where the entire purpose of the meeting could be to allow anyone who has something to add to the conversation to speak. So you could have a listening session as a separate meeting. You could have a listening session on your agenda with regard to a particularly interesting or controversial or of the moment matter. You could include, you know, a longer period as a listening session. I think there are, there are ways to navigate this that don't necessarily have to be in the, in the policy.
And that's, and the listening session is what, is what we did with the wind turbine. We did have a separate evening and spent two and a half hours or so on it. So that makes a lot of sense. Could it be like 20, 20 minutes and longer at the discretion of the chair? Is that something that works, Lauren?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think, I think it's, it's fine to leave that discretion. Again, I, I think that the problem is in, in how it plays out. Again, if you have people, if you are hearing wonderful things from members of the public about, about the board, let's say, and how it's, you know, handling a certain thing, are you, are you more likely to say, okay, we'll keep listening to this. This is great, as compared to if you're hearing complaints or criticisms? Are you more likely as a chair to say, you know what, enough's enough? And I think the reason, if you had an overall limit, the 30 minutes or 20 minutes or whatever it is, the benefit of that is it has nothing to do with what's being said. And instead, it just has to do with the timing. So the benefit of having the overall limit is that it makes it easier to, you know, to make a decision to move on because there's no debate. It doesn't matter what the content is. If you don't have an overall limit in that circumstance, or if you said 20 minutes are at the discretion of the chair, my recommendation would be that that extended time period be decided before the conversation starts. And that could be done, as I, as I indicated, by saying, who here, you know, is planning or would like to say something during the public comment period? And if you look out and see a slew of hands that's going to exceed the 20 minutes, the chair could say, okay, we're going to try to accommodate everyone. We'll do 40 minutes or whatever it might be.
That's really helpful, Lauren.
Right back to us, yeah.
Yep, okay.
And I don't think we have to worry about people talking about how wonderful we've done and going over time. It's not, we haven't had that problem yet.
Any, any other comments or questions from the board? Tom, were there specific parts of it that you wanted Lauren to go over that you thought would be helpful?
Not necessarily. I mean, if, that's, that's not absolutely necessary. I just also want to remark that one thing that public comment policy does apply to is everybody getting equal time. So it, no matter what the number of minutes is, if somebody were to get seven minutes, everyone has to get seven minutes. So I just think that that's a key piece of this and timing that, that, I'm not saying we're not keeping them up, but we should keep them up.
Okay, I did promise to take comments from the public. I'm going to go to Charity Benz on line.
And we're doing the three minutes.
Yeah. Let's see how it goes. If you could stay within three minutes and then if, if, you know, the conversation is valuable, we can, we can, I can circle back around for follow-up comments. So go ahead, Charity.
Charity, you need to unmute.
It is okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I have a question and a comment. A question for Lauren. As things stand now, I think that there is a separation between public comment, you know, some general question or some issue that somebody wants to raise, and then public comment for a specific subject. How would these rules apply under that circumstance? And then I'd like to make a comment afterwards.
Madam Chair, through you, if you'd like me to respond?
Yes, go ahead, Lauren. So the difference between our public comment that we describe as for items not on the agenda versus chair discretion in terms of taking public input on agenda items?
And the amount of time that you would provide for each situation?
So, so the way that I have looked at the, the policy as it's in front of you is that the public comment period is, you know, the time where people can bring matters forward that relate to the board's jurisdiction, not necessarily the things on the agenda, but not prohibiting things on the agenda either. In other municipalities, what they've done is they've included a more specific public comment period related to particular items as well. So it might not have a time limit, but it might just say on the agenda, including public comment with the three-minute limit applicable to speakers during that timeframe as well.
Well, I comment on that through the chair would be that it might be helpful to make a more specific clarification of those two different instances, if that's possible. And I agree with Matt and Malcolm and Tom and Dawn, the 10 minutes is almost insulting to the public. And the reason people come to express their views in many cases is because they're upset about something. And if they're upset about something, I think the town is better to let them get it off their chests and say what they have to say as long as done civilly. And there seem to be adequate protections in this policy that permit the chair to shut somebody down if they're being rude or abusive. But I do think that giving the chair some discretion, as Lauren has suggested, so that you get a sense of what is bothering people who have come is a very important element of leadership in being able to recognize serious concerns and differentiate them from just people reiterating what somebody else has said. Thank you.
Thanks, Charity. Amy?
Amy Eldridge. I really appreciate you guys considering the 10-minute rule because three people being able to talk at public comment is, is kind of short. But I do appreciate the thought that if there is a crisis issue on the agenda that it can be possibly put in or a meeting be held the other, at another time just for that specific topic so that you can stay on task for your meeting because nobody wants you guys here till 11 o'clock at night. But, you know, nobody expected the wind farm to happen the way that it went down. But having a separate night for like a critical issue and it just be that would be amazing because then I think it frees up the everyday questions during the traditional public comment or having something at the end for those hot topics if there is time. But I agree, like, if you kind of have an idea that, you know, we're going to roughly give you 30 minutes and like tonight, it wouldn't have been used. There wasn't that many people here and online, then great. But then if you know you've got a heavy agenda, then you know that you've kind of got a cutoff. And as you see how we all behave or not behave, then you guys kind of decide whether you're going to let that kind of go over another 10 minutes because there's only three more people in line or hands up online. So I appreciate you guys keeping this open to us because it's really important. Thank you.
I just want to be clear. I don't think, I'm the only one who hasn't spoken about the 10 minutes because I'm chairing the meeting. I have no interest in limiting this to 10 minutes. I don't think that there's any history of that happening as I've been chair, and I have no intention to do that. So let's just take that off the table. It's not going to be 10 minutes, I think, by consensus. So we'll start there. If anyone was going to comment about the fact, about the 10 minutes, it's out the window. Alternative in terms of a range of times, I'd be curious to hear from the public about that. What, how much time you think is enough? I'm going to go to Megan Perry online and then I'm going to go back and forth.
Thanks, Brooke. My apologies in advance. I'm not going to be as eloquent as the last two public comment speakers. First, nobody understands your desire to limit public comment more than me, I think. So I, I appreciate that you're taking public comment on limiting public comment. Just a couple of questions and things I jotted down while you guys were talking about this and while Ms. Goldberg was going over it. I'm curious how limiting public comment helps foster community trust in you, the board members and elected officials that we have elected. I don't think we need any more censorship. I'm also not sure how this helps promote community engagement that this very board says they want by, by limiting public comment. Well, there, I was just reading through the memo that I believe Mr. Giorgio submitted. I was curious, will there be a police officer at every board meeting to make sure that everybody abides by the three-minute rule? And is that really the best use of our police force? Then who determines who gets to speak? Will it only be members of the public who are generally in favor of whatever pet project is being discussed or, or before the board? And then if a member of the public wants to bring something up to the community's attention, how do we get to do that if we are not among some of the people who are selected? Especially if the chair and vice chair who are setting the agendas don't want to put one of those topics on as an agenda item? And then when we're talking about if the agenda is very full, I'm struggling with that one because the chair and the vice chair set the agenda. So maybe we could set agendas with adequate time to allow for public comment rather than having some meetings that are maybe just a half hour long and some that are three hours long. Maybe set your agendas that, so your topics allow for public comment. Because this is something that, as elected board members, you signed up to hear from the public. So I, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to limit the people who have put you in these elected positions. Generally, you hear from us, yes, when people are upset about something because most of the time, people don't speak out unless it is something that directly affects them. And is that a bummer? Yes. I think it's great if we can have positive reinforcement, but sometimes that doesn't happen. And that just kind of goes along with the job that you signed up to do when you ran for office. Sorry, it's just, it's unfortunate, but that's what happened. And along with that, how often do we really have 10 people at public comment on a regular select board night or regular ZVA or CONCOM or shellfish advisory or whatever? I don't think that you really need to worry about 10 people coming and talking for three minutes at a time. And I think it's something that, you know, allowing people to speak is important to do. And I appreciate public comment is very important to a lot of people in this community.
No, Megan.
So thank you for allowing.
Mute her. I just want to say to the public, I made it clear that I might allow people to speak twice, but that I asked them to limit their initial comments to three minutes. Just want to repeat that. Go ahead, Brooke.
Okay. I just think the easiest way to solve this public interaction problem between the board and the community is one thing. Try not to overstep your bounds constitutionally, okay? People are generally respectful to, you know, until they get fired up about something. If you guys would have on the side here an aggregate list, let's say it's the windmill thing. If you put up an aggregate list as people give you issues they have, then the next people that come in its comment will see that aggregate list of the public's concerns and you won't have to repeat all the same things that everybody's saying. You know what I'm saying? So if I came tonight with a list of solutions to a list of problems, I could perhaps run a PowerPoint through and get through the entire thing in the three minutes that I have. So I don't think that the 10 minutes or the 30 minutes or anything that's established through legal code or anything is going to do anything but draw in people claiming their rights have been violated. So I think the better approach is to be more proactive in getting out what they all want from you, establishing it in a list like these annual reports on the topic, and then going from there and saying, okay, we have these 12 issues. We've got, we established that these people are generally, you know, concerned about this. And then, then you can continue the discussion without it turning into, I want my time to speak. You know what I'm saying? You can pare it down to each topic. Let's, you got eight or nine topics with the windmills or eight or nine topics on PFAS or anything like that. You guys could pare it down to where you can get, get these things resolved individually on a, on a particular day or on a particular night. So if Megan has an issue with something in particular, she can come to that particular part of the problem's resolution discussion. And we don't have to spend hours on rehashing the same things over and over, week and week and week. It's like surfside crossing. We all know what the complaints are. We just need to address them and pare it down to where it's not contentious between the public and the elected official.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Campbell Sutton online next and then Jason.
Campbell, yeah? Okay.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Campbell, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I think I may be having, I don't know what's happening, but I'm not getting Zoom very clearly. So I'm just going to sort of run through my thoughts, hoping that at some point, somebody hears something. I'm talking into the microphone end of the iPad. So when it comes to timing, I think if you're going to have three minutes, you need to make your determination at, you know, moments of three. So it's either 18, 21, 24, you know, 27, that kind of thing. You can't say 20 minutes because obviously someone's going to only get two minutes. That was one thing. The other thing I thought in terms of redundancy, which isn't always popular, but I think you could do something like hear here or a clap to try and find out how many people are there to say the same, you know, sort of thing. And the other thing, like for hot topics, I think, because one of the things I think is really confusing for people is the difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. And I think if you have a topic that people are really hot about, you might consider having a public hearing whereby they sort of, the whole idea is to have them speak versus at a public meeting where you're trying to do the business of the town. That, that might be helpful. The, the other piece was that I know at the planning board, they're doing three minutes plus one minute. So you have three minutes, you're notified, and then you have a minute to close or, or however. And that seems to be working very well. So I don't know if anybody heard me, but I really appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
So we did hear Campbell. So hopefully she can hear that we heard her. Jason, do you want to go?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Grazia Day with the current. I wanted to ask and talk about one part of the policy, not necessarily the timing. But I think we've really lost something with public comment with part of the policy that was implemented, I don't know, three or four years ago, where public comment used to be something where someone could come and talk to you guys and get a response and have an engagement with you guys. And I think we've lost that. And I think it's really a disservice to people who take time out of their day to come here or to go online and, and talk to you guys and ask a question or make a comment. And then all they get is thank you. And then a week later, something comes on the website that's been written or vetted by lawyers. And, you know, I think you guys owe it to your, to the community and the constituents to respond to them in real time. Of course, there might be some things where you don't know the answer or say, we'll need to get back to you on that. You know, that, that makes sense. But I think there's a lot of times where some give and take and a conversation should be happening here at public comment. And I think it's really, you know, kind of a sad state of affairs to have just say, thank you, and we'll get back to you and post an answer on the website. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. I'd love to have town council speak to that because there are, there's some stuff in the documentation we got today about why we don't respond in public comment and that there's, there's legal reasons for that. There's practical reasons as well, which I can talk about a little bit in my experience as chair. But either John or Lauren, who wants to take that one?
Well, I, I'm happy to, to answer. And I just, I wanted to just clarify, and I, I don't know if I mentioned this in my opening remarks, but I think what's essential to understand is that the open meeting law does not require that the chair allow any person to speak. And so while I certainly understand that time limits can, can seem somewhat stultifying, the, the open meeting law is, is really intended to ensure that people can hear what public officials are saying. So that, that's the first thing. The second thing is that the, the risks to the, to the town for inadvertently cutting someone off or, or not allowing someone to speak when others have allowed, been allowed to speak are just ever so much clearer after this Barron v. Kalenda case. And so that's one of the reasons why John and I are here tonight is certainly, I think, we all remember back when there was a free flow of ideas at meetings and people, you know, were kind of jumping in during discussions and, and that kind of thing. And there was some back and forth between boards and members of the public. But because we're dealing, dealing with potential civil rights violations, that can include triple damages and, as well as penalties. And so the, the risk is real and it's very hard to navigate in a way that avoids that risk if everything is left to the discretion of the board or the chair. And that's why we've presented you with a policy that provides some, you know, some boundaries or guidelines for that. And then finally, with respect to deliberating with members of the public at open meetings, I think, you know, there's a few, a few issues to bear in mind. The first is that many times the matter is not before the board when it comes up in open session. The board hasn't had a time to discuss it. The board hasn't had time to look into it. It's not well-informed, perhaps. And there's been no opportunity for the board itself to take a position or to understand the issues enough to take a position. And so individual members going back and forth can often lead to kind of statements being made that don't have a foundation and that, that kind of jump ahead of the board as a whole. So that's, that's another reason. And then in addition, there's a number of issues that can be raised at open meetings of boards that really aren't the types of matters that the boards themselves are in charge of or, or dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Which is to say, some of it is administration-related. How are things working, et cetera? And so I think the point as well before about the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting, really the, the meetings, and I know the board has put a high value on allowing, allowing public comment. At the same time, there really is business to accomplish. And so there needs to be some balance there. And so this policy tries to balance all of those various issues in a way that prioritizes public comment and at the same time, gives the board the tools that it needs to be able to, to take in the information that's provided and then get to its business. Of course, matters that were raised at public comment can be added to a future meeting and public comment can be solicited at that time as well.
Thanks, Lauren. I'm going to go to Jim Mundani online. Oh, John, did you want to add something before we do?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add to something Lauren said. The board has been doing a lot of work in preparing responses to public comments. I know that the chair, that's a big job that the chair has and those, we saw it tonight. I don't think Lauren was on the, on the call at that point. But at just about every meeting now, the chair responds to comments, public comments from prior meetings. And I think that while there is a delay of a week, I think that's a very good practice for the board to follow without violating the open meeting law. Because that's the other thing, you know? If, if, if the board starts engaging with people, and Lauren mentioned this, without something being on the agenda other than public comment, you run the real risk of an open meeting law complaint being filed against you. Because the mere fact that you're saying it, something, one board member is saying something in front of the other board members, expressing a viewpoint or a feeling, that is deliberation. And you can find yourself violating the open meeting law if you do that.
Thank you. Jim Mundani online?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
I appreciate you allowing public hearing on, public, on comments, on the public hearing comments. I, I don't think that was done the last time. So I appreciate this dialogue. I just, I just want to comment on the three minutes. And I'm not sure what that's based off of. I don't know if that's kind of an arbitrary timeframe. And in thinking through that, it occurred to me that, do we really need to limit that? I don't, I don't think it's a problem here from what I can see in any of the committee meetings. And I'm just not sure that we need to, to limit that. To me, it seems like, depending on the issue, you know, it could go longer. It doesn't necessarily have to. But I think we're trying to regulate something. Based on that case, we're trying to regulate something or create a problem, regulate a problem that doesn't exist. Because I don't think we have this big problem of people standing up and reading a chapter from Moby Dick or something like that to, to filibuster a meeting. So I, I'm wondering if, if there's a basis for it. If there are, you know, is there a range, a study that we can somehow get a better idea of what the, the timeframe should be? And my second question, or my question is, does it have to apply to all committees as a general? a general policy, or is it up to the discretion of each individual chair? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I'm going to ask Town Council to respond to the second question first about the application across the town.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. As I think I indicated when we started, due to the significant potential for liability, it has been the case and, and that, that we've been recommending that the policy does apply across the board to all boards and committees. If, if different boards handle it differently and different chairs handle it differently, the risk is that the law will, I mean, that, that the law will inadvertently be violated. Again, and I, I can understand there, there, it seeming like we might be addressing an issue that doesn't exist, but leaving the amount of time a person can speak to, to the discretion of the chair, or whether the policy applies to one body, one public body and not another, it, it creates the opportunity for violations, and that's the purpose of, of having this policy before the board tonight, is to limit the opportunity for those types of violations.
Yeah. And I wanted to make a comment as in my experience as chair thus far. Having the same time limit for everyone makes it not in my power or at my discretion to choose winners and losers in public comment. And, and it's hard enough to do this job, honestly, to manage a meeting. I signed up for it. I enjoy it. I'm doing, trying to do my best, but if I were to allow one person, I mean, the timer goes off at three minutes, and we got a long email about people being given three minutes and 11 seconds or three minutes and 18 seconds. And, and, you know, we could set up technology where the mics go off at three minutes, but I don't think we're there yet. I think that at three minutes, I, the alarm goes off, I clarify to the speaker that their three minutes are up, and generally within 10 seconds, 15 seconds or so. I'm not making that judgment call. It's a legal risk for me to make that judgment call, and it's a personal risk for me to make that judgment call because I don't want to be perceived as allowing someone who, you know, one person to speak longer than another at my discretion. There's a, that's, to me, the main reason for having this time limit, is it, it's applicable to everybody equally, and that makes my job more precise and less subject to interpretation or frustration or, heaven forbid, legal action as described by Town Council. So I just really wanted to state that. This job is harder than it looks like on a recording. So I just state that for, for myself and for future chairs of all the, of all the meetings. Having rules and guidelines helps meeting management, moving it along, giving everybody the opportunity to speak in equal increments, and that, to me, is important, to give everybody the same opportunity. So I'll get off my soapbox now, and Tucker, if you'd like to comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tucker Holland. Didn't come, like, plan any comment on this topic, but just listening to some of the dialogues so far, I just wanted to say a few things. One, I agree with Charity Benz that the general public comment section of any agenda should not be limited in time, and that really we're talking about a public comment aspect relative to a specific agenda item. So I think that's where your thinking is at, but I just wanted to concur with what Charity had said in that regard. In my opinion, three minutes is a great amount of time. That is consistent with the amount of time you're given at the State House to testify when you're going to testify on any given topic. And I think actually, three minutes is respectful to the public at large. There are many folks who aren't in this room who attend a meeting virtually or look at one later wanting to educate themselves on a particular subject, and the fact that someone has to deliver their point within three minutes is actually useful to them rather than having to listen to perhaps someone go on a bit too long or ad nauseam, as someone might say. So I do think the three-minute limit respects everyone involved. And finally, I just was wondering, listening to what Lauren was saying earlier, whether the policy could say that it is 30 minutes that will be given to public comment on any given item unless it is determined by the chair before the item begins that it will be different. And it could be a shorter period if the agenda is full, or it could be a longer period if the chair senses there's time, excuse me, that there's interest by more parties than 10, and there's time in that given meeting to allow for longer discussion. Hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Tucker.
Yeah, when we go to Boston, they're not even, half the time when you're, you're speaking, they're not even listening to you. They're walking out of the room, they're in the back, you know, there's other things going on. You know, we're actually here, and we're actually listening to the public, and we're actually taking it in. You know, when I've testified in Boston, I'm, I'm fairly confident very, very often that it isn't really being taken in, and you're in, whatever. I, I agree that in the old days, we used to answer. I wish we could do that again. I have to hold my tongue a lot of times, especially when people are saying things that I think we could answer, but we're, you know, we are, our hands are tied because if we do, then we're, you know, we're doing what John Giorgio's saying. We're starting a rolling meeting, an illegal meeting, and if people want to take aim at us, they can. And so I think it's really important that people understand that, yeah, we'd love to just answer right away, but that's, you know, it doesn't work that way at this point, unfortunately. I think the three and one minute, or, you know, I think giving people a warning and some time to wrap up, maybe we could be thinking something like that. That sounds, you know, reasonable, and I think we have to limit it. I think we have to limit it, limit it to three and a little bit, or 30 minutes total or something. I do think, and I don't like the idea of, like, changing it every week because then, you know, sort of, so, you know, Nat will come up and say, well, you gave Tucker three minutes last week, why are you only giving me two minutes? I mean, you just, we end up in this swirl where I think a rule's a rule, so.
Before Nat, we didn't answer the question about, from Jim, about three minutes and where it came from, and, and if Town Council could speak to your experience in other communities. I know Boston City Council is three minutes. I did a little research on this, so it's pretty standard practice, but if you could just help us understand in municipal governance, governance in Nantucket and in Massachusetts, what the practice normally is.
Certainly, Madam Chair. I do think there's a range. I think three minutes in my experience, and I didn't, I don't have any empirical evidence right now, but just three minutes is a pretty typical amount of time, which is why it's included. It's also a pretty typical amount of time even at town meetings, like the legislative body, town meetings. And so that's what we put in there. It's not required by law, but it does seem like an appropriate period of time.
Thank you. Malcolm, you unmuted. Did you want to add something before I take Nat's comment?
No, I was just thinking about the three minutes, and we heard about maybe the planning board, three minutes, and you have a minute to wrap up. Just thinking about that. If that's a consideration, or we go back to the three minutes?
Okay. Let's, let's put a pin in that, and we'll hear from Nat.
Yeah, just glad I waited to talk because I agree with what Tucker said, and Lauren's done a great job. Thank you for being here because, as Matt just said, you can't do this stuff anymore, meaning this is the sign of the times. This is what's caught, that is what's causing this issue. There are contentious issues that come up where there has to be some kind of order of something. Doesn't have to be right to the second, but like, there has to be some kind of rules or else things can get out of control, especially in the last three or four years. I mean, the leadership we've had with COVID and the stuff that you've had to deal with, Brooke, which didn't see coming either, the windmills and some other things, has caused a lot of discourse, and there has to be some kind of control mechanism. I just want to remind the public sometimes, you know, I've been at this whole thing, I don't even know what I'm doing anymore, I'm doing so many different things, 21 years. It isn't like it was then. It isn't like it was 10 years ago, let alone now. It's amazing how things have changed. When you see new people come in, like I, like I do with the steamship, I want to, like, poke the guy and say, hey, don't ask that question at the public meeting, you know? Sometimes people say things that, that really isn't the right thing, but they don't know the process, and then they learn, and it takes time to figure that stuff out. But we're volunteers. We're all volunteers, no matter what committee you're on, whether it's a big position like yours or a lesser position, it doesn't matter. It is a lot of time and a lot of work and a lot of caring about Nantucket. And I think that, you know, clearing up the whole public comment versus public hearings, I mean, you can get up and speak 10 times at a planning board meeting because there's all these different hearings, and then you can get up again in the same one. I'm more concerned with town meeting being a little longer to speak myself, but that's another conversation. So free speech, I think a lot of people believe that this is, you know, holding back free speech. We've got Zoom, see all the people up there? There could be a lot more. We're lucky to have all this hybrid stuff. You can be in your, your winter home in Florida, wherever you're from, and have a home here, and now you can talk at a meeting anytime you want. Imagine what some of the summer residents, if they knew that was coming, they'd be pretty excited about being able to do that now. So we've come a long way with transparency and openness and inclusiveness with hybrid, and it, it, it does have its negatives because you can have more people, but it's good for everyone that you can do that.
Okay.
So don't forget all the good stuff. Thank you very much, Brooke, for everything you do.
Thanks, Nat. Yeah, and, and I'm cutting Nat off because we've, we started the timer late, so. Yeah, it's a lot to manage. Okay, so, oh, Deanne Atherton online. Thanks, Erica.
Thank you, Brooke. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Deanne.
I have a question and an overall comment. I think that there is some confusion about the three-minute limit when it comes to public comment relevant to an issue that is not on, on, on the agenda, and then public participation in the discussion of agenda items. Now, is the latter subject to the three-minute limit?
The, the answer is yes. However, it has been my practice that I have allowed people to speak more than once on agenda items, but I make them get back in queue in order to allow everyone who wants to speak once to speak once. I don't, I can't think of a time where I haven't, where I've, other than when hands are raised really late, like when I've said, we've got two hands online and we're going to stop after that, and then someone raises a hand after that, I generally allow people to speak more than once on agended items. So perhaps a question for Town Council, that's not a concern, is it?
Madam Chair, the, any, any time you're exercising discretion about something like that, about whether to let someone speak more than once or whether to allow someone to speak for a longer time, could lead to an issue. You know, although it may not be a popular position, making a rule and sticking to it is definitely the most protective of the town's interests.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. May I make my comment now, please?
Sure, go ahead, Deanne.
Okay, my overall comment is, I think we're talking about one small aspect of a much larger core value, and the core value is, does our government value citizen participation in decision-making? And if it does, then public participation should be welcomed, and it's a strength of our town government. I agree there has to be some kind of limit to that, but we're talking about just very small aspect of public participation with public comment. But I know, because I've been observer and then involved in town government for as long as we've lived here, almost 35 years, and I don't know how to get an item on an agenda. Sometimes I don't even get responses to emails from our elected officials. And I would just ask you to look at this in sort of the bigger picture. I think the number of public comments you're getting, of people coming, is an indication, perhaps, of frustration that people are not feeling listened to. And I hope you all, you know, seriously, my time is up.
Yep, it is. Thanks, Deanne. Megan Perry online?
I just wanted to finish and say thank you. That was all.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Okay, I think Megan's hand's still up, but she finished.
I usually put them down.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so where's the board at on this?
Madam Chair, if I could just kind of summarize, attempt to summarize a little bit. So as Lauren stated, and you stated in the beginning of the meeting, I think this is, Town Council recommended this to come to us, to put us in line with some new case law, and what was in, what is in the packet wasn't any suggestion or particular notion or pushing it to, pushing it anyway for us to change what we've been doing, or you, the chair's, the chair's been doing. I can't think of a single instance when Dawn was chair or yourself where you haven't taken anyone's comment when somebody had. I think we had one Zoom bomber who was clearly, who you didn't take the second time or something, but in my recollection, everyone's gotten to speak. I think the three, in my, in my research that I was doing and talking to a friend of mine who's a, a Cape Select Board member, they do three minutes as well. It seems to work. It seems to me like that is a good balance on, on three minutes. I think what Deanne brings up about agenda items is a completely separate thing, but I could, I think I can speak for the board and definitely myself that highly value public comment. People come to tell us whether it's an issue they're having, or whether it's the SCOTTS folks and they're talking about the bluff walk, some issues, or whether it's Tucker, who was just here, talking about the Eagle Scouts, and it's, it's all part of the fabric of our, our democracy here, and I think we want to encourage that. To Lauren's comments, we do have business to do here, and you as chair, whoever's chair, needs to strike that balance. But I think we all highly, I don't think any of us would sign up, including some of us with multiple, multiple terms and text till midnight on stuff like that, would, would definitely be not in this position if we weren't willing to reach out to the public. So kind of what, what I'm hearing is, on the policy, is either to do, to put in overall time limit, I'm just going to make it up, 30 minutes, again, I'm trying to just coalesce this, 30 minutes, and then with the, with the allowances of the time manner and place restrictions under what's allowable, maybe the chair could say something like, oh, who's here to speak for public comment, or who's here? And then if there are 17 hands and that exceeds, or whatever, the, the 30 minutes, then you could say, okay, well, it's going to be 40 minutes, but then it's But then it's, it's, as Lauren said, it's up there. Or to not put a time limit and to just, as Lauren said before, before the meeting, to, to not have the 30 minutes, which I could see being misconstrued somehow. If somebody were to read the policy quickly and said, oh, well, they're only going to take 30 minutes on this big topic, so I might not get a chance to speak. But if, 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 if there's, if there's an allowance for the chair to just see the hands or however the chair and town council suggests to do it and there are 40 people here, and then you can on the spot and say, okay, we're going to allot an hour or whatever, whatever is reasonable. But I think that whoever, yourself or whoever the chair is, would default to hearing everyone's comments because I think that's, I think that's what's, that's what's been done in the past.
Anybody else?
I'm kind of, we could do this for six or nine months. We could go three minutes and give people a warning at like two and a half. You know, we could go two and a half and say, you've got 30 more seconds. You know, just instead of just warning them right at three if they're not watching the clock. And we could do, you know, we could do 30 minutes total. And if we get over, I think instead of like changing it on that night, if we get over, then we have to have a, you know, a listening session. I mean, I, I think that's, you know, the sort of the lesson that we've had. I, I think I would rather do that and try it at like three minutes and 30 minutes than put too much wiggle room in it to start. But that's just.
Dawn or Malcolm?
Yes, yeah, I'm comfortable with the three minutes and the 30 minutes are adjusted based upon the, how many people are going to have speaking. I'm not sure that the three minute rule would necessarily apply for other boards of the non-public speaking or the non-public comment section. But I'm comfortable as, as stated. I think Tom summarized it well.
Dawn?
Yeah, I would agree with Malcolm and Tom and everyone who's spoken. I just, I, I like the idea of it being at the discretion of the chair, but for the hands to be raised at the very beginning, so there's no bias.
And the other thing is that, you know, sometimes people are in the audience and they're listening and, and they didn't at the beginning of the item think they were going to speak and then they're inspired to speak. So I, I'm really uncomfortable putting a time limit on agended items because we just don't know. It's, I want that to feel more like a conversation because it's a topic that the board has agended and that we want, you know, we're asking for, it's a dialogue. That feels more like a dialogue when it's on the agenda. The public comment, not on the agenda, I think putting a, putting a, establishing a 30 minute limit. But maybe it becomes a, a standard practice to ask people to raise their digital hands or raise their hands in the room before public comment starts. And then, then we can sort of assess whether, whether we might go beyond the 30 minutes. Is that, does that make sense to town council? But at, before we start, before we open the public input on any topic.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I think as long as it's not based on the content of what people might say, then it's reasonable to utilize that as a time, place and manner restriction. So if I'm hearing you correctly, it would mean you would say essentially for a period of 30 minutes or such other period as the chair may determine prior to the start of the meeting based upon indications of the public or indications of likely speakers.
Something like that, yeah. Malcolm?
Yeah, I just, I want to emphasize something that the Dawn and you had said. As far as the agenda items, we have to be, we have, those are often debate and dialogue. And I don't want to see a lot of restrictions on that. Sometimes see at the Board of Health, we have issues where we have to debate it. Some people have to speak for 20 minutes and some people for two minutes just for the nature of the debate of the issues. And that's important. As far as public comments section, I agree with all that's been said.
Let me ask you guys about, I mean, I know Lauren advised against it when I asked this question, but during an agenda item, having people limit to three minutes and then get back in queue as a, as a way to make sure that someone, the, I mean, the concern I have is that if someone takes 20 minutes and there's 20 people waiting, right, that there's, there's a fairness issue around that in terms of access to, to the mic to be able to speak. So I'd like to do, continue to have everything in three minute increments. And Lauren, I know you don't want us to take the risk about unagended items, but I, I really do want to hold on to the value of that being more conversational and, and, and that the dialogue, the conversation evolves during the agenda item.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, I, I am perfectly comfortable with you having the rule that you have people speak in three minute increments and that they have to get back in line. I think as long as that's the rule, you can implement that without risk of, of any constitutional issues. So I, I have no problem with that.
Terrific, thanks. John?
Madam Chair, could I say something radical here?
Yes, please.
The, the policy that you have in front of you, I think you could consider making one change to what's printed. And that's taking out the 10 minute reference. Has, and then see how this works over the next six months. And if the overall amount of time that you're spending on public comment has, is not an issue, then maybe your policy is fine the way it is. If it becomes overbearing, for whatever reason, you always can go back and revisit the policy at a later date.
Perfect.
I like that. Anybody else?
Agree.
I mean, it's basically what we're doing now. So, yeah. Okay, everybody felt comfortable? Yeah, so removing the time, total time limit of 10 minutes and leaving the three minute per speaker and.
Can we try to warn them at like 2:30?
Yeah, so, so I found when I didn't have a timer that I was, I was, and Tom, Tom was timing over here. And I was interrupting people's speech to warn them that their time was up. I mean, aside from the fact that people go 10 or 15 seconds through my saying, your time's up and they're, they're saying their last sec, their statement, I don't want to turn off mics at, at the, at the three minute. So, I mean, I, I feel as though it's been fairly applied and let's just see how it goes. So we would need a motion, right? John?
Just one other thing, Madam Chair. It's really important for the board to distinguish between public comment and a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
If you have an advertised public hearing, this public comment policy does not apply.
Right. Yeah, and that's much more common at the planning board and other boards. We do have public hearings, but they're not the, the bread and butter of what we do. Most, a lot of them are happening on Mondays at our licensing and petitioning. So.
When I say the pub, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. When I say the, this policy doesn't apply, I'm talking about the three minute rule.
Right.
They still need to be recognized by the chair and, and any comments have to be orderly and peaceable, which is the bottom line.
Yep. Okay, thanks for making that distinction. I think that was important. Okay. So, so I'd be looking for a motion to adopt this with the amendment of removing the 10 minute rule.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion from Dawn, second from Matt. By roll call, Dawn?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone. It was a great discussion. Appreciate all the input from the public on it. Okay, any committee reports? All quiet out there. Okay. Okay, a motion to adjourn from Dawn, a second.
Second.
Second from Matt. Dawn?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thanks, everybody out there. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.